All right, so it is six o'clock, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Um, so because of the new rule with public input, we're gonna open the public input at six o'clock. So at this time, is there anyone in the public who has public input? If you could just state your name for the record. All right, seeing none, we will move through our agenda, but if at any time you have something to say, just wave and get my attention and we'll stop what we're doing and address it, okay? All right, minutes from September 7th. I did see one thing. Page two, under 6.2.1, it should say Ms. Bishop, because Ms. Bishop is on safety and security, not me.
Yep. On, on page three, um, it says Ms. Walsh asked if anyone would like to volunteer. I think Chris asked if anybody would like to volunteer. And then, uh, Bobby, Jane, and Rachel all said yes, they were interested. It says Ms. Walsh, not Mr. Andrew Skier. And on page four, it just should say NYAA, just an A was left off. And, um, oh, and then, um, under new business, on number eight, uh, number three, we were talking about board community relations. Jackie had talked about that there were, we had done frequent surveys during COVID and about the superintendent. I think that the point to that was that we hadn't done anything, just a general question about the school. And that we had talked about doing that going forward.
Okay, just so we're clear, though. My comments about my feelings about the new measure was definitely not put in there.
It's okay, it's on the video.
I know, but it's not right. So Nancy, I totally appreciate you taking it out, but if we're gonna be... Oh, I felt pretty strongly then. I feel equally as strongly now, to be honest with you. I will amend it to say that clearly the people up there have way too much time on their hands. And so if you want to put that in...
That's not what you said.
No, I said way other things, and someone involved swears. But I promised my wife I would not swear tonight. So if you want to amend my comments to say it's, it's a clear indication that our, our people up at whatever they are, State House, have way too much time on their hands, that I think would encapsulate my feelings.
I know, because there's nothing about your feelings in this at all.
No, 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 no. I think Nancy thought I was joking. Okay, well, that hurts my feelings. I appreciate it. It's a comment, it's...
Under that, though, we did also have a whole conversation about, um, not necess-- because in the, in the policy, it talks about limiting to 30 minutes, but we were comfortable with having, uh, exchange back and forth as long as it didn't get out of control. So I, I think that might be worth noting. Oh, I don't know, what did I say? Public, uh, public input...
Should not be limited to...
Should not be limited to three minutes per person.
The board welcomes dialogue as long as order is maintained.
Sure.
I, I thought it sounded great.
Look at Tom and I agreeing again. Amazing.
Another good night for you.
Guys, go buy a lottery ticket. Seriously. All right, so do we have a motion to pass the minutes as amended?
A motion to pass the minutes as amended.
Are you motioning or seconding?
Motioning.
Yeah, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Molly, manifesting financials.
Okay, so thank you for sending the manifest. Now, in your board pack was the first line, your financial. We are still building a lot of encumbrances, so it's everything that we need today. We have some maybe shifting between lines, we eyeing out everything, but did anyone have any questions?
Um, are there any major, like, major swifts, shifts that you saw?
Um, I wouldn't say major, there's any, there's between your age line, I think it's the classification between specialties and regularities.
Yeah, okay.
Is more of where people are budgeted, but we do have some savings this year on that line due to one open position.
Okay, is that what, that's what I was gonna ask, if that's what that was?
Yeah, so it's in that savings, but you'll see one line is overall, one line is significantly under budget. It's just people moving between the lines, but overall being one position. Other than that, I mean, I think everything looks pretty good. There's certain things we don't encumber into the packings, like substitutes for food, those types of things, like good food service for dinner.
Are we anticipating a fuel oil issue?
Fuel oil issue?
Based on?
Of the 5,000.
Yeah.
So that would be, those are, there's no encumbrance on that, so yes, we are going to be overspent on fuel. It's not significant, but yes.
All right, moving on to committee reports. First is policy reviews.
Still haven't met, so...
Are you guys meeting ever again?
I don't think so. I think we've decided we're done with policies.
Okay.
And there should be no more. But, um, honestly, my guess is we're gonna probably meet in October, well, yeah, this October. So we're probably gonna meet this month sometime, but I haven't received anything about, anything with the meetings. So when it comes to these, like, for example, like, the board conflict of interest, like...
We still haven't talked about it.
We haven't talked about it.
Right.
So, and we haven't talked about the special observance days either, so...
Well, we talked about that last year.
Well, we did, so, right, that was the first reading, so, I mean, I guess that one we can definitely button up. Did anybody change their mind?
Um, well, the first thing I noticed is the one that's in the packet does not include the Ash Wednesday, Good Friday.
Oh, yeah, we talked about that.
So you can add it?
Okay.
Yep, this is your policy to add or amend?
Yeah, we had, because last meeting we had asked to add those two.
Uh, yeah, yep.
So we just wanna make sure that those both get in there.
So please tell me again, Ash Wednesday?
Ash Wednesday and Good Friday. Otherwise, is there any others that you guys noticed that are missing, or does it...
No, because that's what we were, we had talked about, so...
So do we want to make a motion, so that way we can pass this one along?
Your turn.
Okay. I always thought the chair just made the motion, didn't ask for people...
Oh, fine, I, I...
No, I'm making the motion now. You started this freaking process. Uh, I will make a motion to accept the special observance days ACD slash R as amended.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Tom, there's one thing I did actually was curious about with policy.
Sure.
When you guys meet. Can you ask if there's, what their procedure is gonna be about addressing inclusion, equity, uh, inclusion in their language of policies that aren't under review? Just because a lot of times when those policies are coming forward, there's still some inconsistencies.
Gotcha.
All right, safety and security.
We met. It was a good meeting. We had, we discussed a lot. A lot that I can't necessarily go into detail, however, things are being discussed. We discussed drills and new procedures that have been put into place after Uvalde, which is really good. Everybody seems in a positive place on what's been implemented since then, and our, um, fellow officers were there, it was great. There's a new reporting system that is gonna be tracking our drills to make sure that we're doing them and doing them in a timely fashion and staying on top of the latest and greatest. We talked about, Rich Kane was talking about doing some refresher training for the teachers and, and new staff that we may have, and Alice, and, and various, um, safety and security measures. We're looking into communications with the PD. People are, uh, different. Radios and such are getting upgrades, so we're looking at making sure that we can talk. The Greenland bus issue came up, and we were assured that background checks are happening with our bus drivers. And if, um, we talked a lot about this, see, you see something, say something. So if, if you're seeing something, reporting it to the building principal and then taking it up with our student. So overall, a really great meeting, lots of discussion, um, in, yeah. Chris, do you have anything to add?
Uh, just the walkie-talkies that was coming out of a grant that, um, Mr. Kane worked on with all of our schools to do upgraded on, so that wasn't coming out of our money. It was a safety grant that he worked on, about $180,000 through SAU 16 for upgrades. So once he gets the information, those should come in. The other thing that I did mention is that we are sending 18, um, members from SAU 16 to Florida in November for the NABIDA conference. NABIDA is the National Assessment for Behavioral and Threat Assessments Intervention. So we're going there because we were one of the first, uh, public schools in New Hampshire, also in, in the country, to join on board. This is, NABIDA was kind of started at your colleges to look at kids and where they're at, or staff, or, or people, if they're making threatening, um, gestures, behavior, or depression. So we've taken that on through our schools, and we have, um, elementary, middle school, and high school teams that, that we talk about students that we have concerns about. So we're gonna be, we've been asked to go to be part of their, creating their K-12 rubric, um, which will help adapt for our younger students that right now they're, they're struggling with. So we have a couple of teams that will be presenting down there, um, so just we'll give you updates on that. But it's, it's a pretty big deal to have that many people asked to go and be invited. So that's the only thing that, that Jenny missed, otherwise she'd do a great job.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent Search Committee. So we got the community survey results in, and we're starting to go through the results from that. Over 400 responses to the survey, um, and multiples from most towns. The one thing that was mentioned was the deadline. If you want to be on the community discussion group is Friday, if you want to submit your name. The QR code is on an email from Heather, so you can scan and get in there. We will be hopefully putting together those discussion groups early next week. So those that are on those discussion teams will know and be ready for the discussions on the 25th of this month. So, um, that is where I left them, because they were still meeting when I had to leave to come here. So, um, that is all I have as of right now. All right.
Do we have a timeline on when, is, is it posted now?
It, the job has been posted.
And have we gotten applicants?
Heather, so, was asked, Heather said, as of right now, no.
Okay.
We haven't gotten any applicants?
As of right now, no.
When was it posted?
The 29th of September it was supposed to be.
Okay.
So it's been about a week.
Oh, that's nothing then, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, at the last joint board, it was decided that we were going to create an SAU 16 Communications Committee, so we need a designee. Jenny had mentioned at the joint board that she wouldn't mind being our designee. Does that still stand?
Yes, it does.
Tom, do you have any issues with Jenny taking it?
I have lots of issues with Jenny, but not with that one.
You want to be on another committee?
God, you're funny. No, thank you, I'm good, I'm full, but you're quite funny.
So Jackie, can I just add to that? So we talked a little bit about that at SLT today. We should keep, obviously Jenny will be part of that, but we kind of left there not knowing what specifically we're gonna be doing in that committee. So we really struggle with meeting without really having a purpose of why we have this communications. Is it communications? Is it public relations? Is it community relations? Is it website? Is it all of those? So although we've got Jenny here, how that meeting might be structured from what we thought at joint board might change at our next joint board meeting, we're gonna kind of work through if we can define some of that. Like, what are we, what's the, what's the drive of this committee?
Right.
Because there's also been an ask for someone from senior leadership to be there. So if we're gonna be helping with that, we kind of want to know what we're trying to accomplish. So this, I put that out there for you to think about when we come to the next joint board meeting. What, what does communication really mean and what's not happening? Because that, I think, would be much more helpful for the drive of that committee and not waste time for people meeting.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul, report. So we had a fantastic open house. There was an 86% turnout. Students did a fantastic job leading their kiddo, or their parents through, uh, not only their classroom, but all of the Unified Arts. It was a really lively and active night. The students did a really, really nice job. Lots of activities, or we're at least starting to pick up our activities after school. We have girls on the run, um, cross-country. It's being coached by our head custodian, Mr. Twombly. The students are doing a great job in that. And then, of course, we have the Seven Rivers, um, with the paddle boarding and the hiking outside. And we have Math Edge, and of course, we have the YMC After School Care in Exeter. We are returning to our field trips. Our first graders came back from a apple picking trip today, and it was fantastic to see them come in with their pumpkins and apples and apple juice and just the excitement that they had. Not just going on a field trip, but really learning about the apple orchard and how they, um, how they run their apple orchard, and the, and then, of course, they do quite a bit instructionally back in the class as far as the parts of the apple, and every field trip always has something instructional attached to it. Our fifth graders and fourth graders are soon going on a trip to Strawberry Bank for the gundelows, for gundalo adventure. A lot of, a lot of our activities last year for our fourth graders, who are our current fifth graders, they weren't able to do some really significant things, um, field trips, and so we're adding them on to, um, some of the trips that our fourth graders will take. Fifth graders also have, uh, the trip to the Cooperative Middle School to do the ropes course and to have their first introduction to Drew Bearstow, who is the middle school principal. We want to just have little opportunities for the students to not only be on campus there, but also for Mr. Bearstow to have lunch with them and just casually get to know them so that they feel really comfortable when they make that transition up to CMS. Our second graders will soon be going to the Audubon. Our third graders are just about to meet some new acquaintances from the UK, where they'll do a study abroad, a virtual field trip, if you will. So we did a, uh, we did, Chris and I went through our facilities projects and our three-year, uh, projects. The paving, the paving of the driveway is definitely our biggest and our highest priority. I would really like to see not only the driveway paved, but also a walkway from the bike rack all the way down to, um, the playground. And for there to be some visual, whether it's granite posts with a metal chain or Chris's less aesthetic, what are those things called?
Jersey barriers.
Jersey barriers, I'm not doing that. But, but some type of delineation so that the students know that they should be on one side and the cars should be on the other, just to keep them safe aesthetically. Putting our, um, trash receptacle behind a fence, some things like that. We already have some students who are excited about the possibility of how to landscape that walkway and really want that to be part of our Earth Day celebration that they, that we have this year. We have really geared up with our first round of leadership, student leadership teams. You can already see some of the things. If you walked in the front door, you saw a receptacle for plastic that was actually initiated by the town. Somebody connected us with them. But, um, it was a cool coincidence, because we had talked about as a faculty having a buddy bench out in recess. And what a buddy bench does is when a student wants a friend, um, they sit on the bench and other friends learn that that's their cue to befriend them and include them in a game. How that relates to having plastic is all the plastic that the students, um, collect becomes, gets turned into a bench. So they're kind of doing a two-for-one in that. This first round of leadership team, what happened, what, uh, the faculty and really led by our counselor, Tracy Elward, decided that instead of a student council, um, which has one election per year and really focuses just on, on a few individuals, that we would have three opportunities during the year for different students to be able to take on leadership roles. So there are six students right now, uh, two from third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. And they have just tackled this with unbridled enthusiasm. Their first thing besides the buddy bench that they did was, uh, collect over 200 inspirational quotes from peers, that they will choose the most inspirational ones. And we're going to have them painted in the bathroom, um, in the stalls, a couple places out in the school. They're super excited about that, and they have a whole list for me to make some decisions on. They came up with really fantastic ideas. Building an outdoor pavilion was something that they were excited about, an idea box for students. I love this one. Talked to Ms. Lieberman about having a spot on her shelves for books that students make, that students can check out. They would like to have the bike trail out back re, um, reintroduced. They want to visit a preschool and work with the kids. They want to do a beach cleanup. They want to do a color run. They want to repave and repaint the basketball court. They want to potentially visit a retirement home and work with Mr. K about a song. They would like to create a New Fields Elementary Basketball or Softball Team. They would like to bring their pets to school. So it is really fantastic, um, stuff that they are excited about and, um, lots of energy around the building. Of course, we've been running our second round of drills, um, in October. We'll finish that out this week. We, we did not do the one today because of the weather. But the students have taken those drills, uh, very seriously and have done a really nice job with them.
Any questions for Suzie?
That's a lot.
Right. Sounds like a lot of really good ideas, and I like the ideas that are coming from the kids, especially the community service. There's a lot of that, so it's great to hear.
How did your, um, the assembly go, the all-school assembly?
It was fantastic. I think that the chief was on the winning team of the hula hoop. If you really want to know the truth, she will kill me, because I think this is getting recorded. But Ms. Rochelle, who had hints that, um, she might be picked for a team, actually practiced with her boyfriend the night before. No competitiveness in our school at all. Chief, you might have had an edge with her practice the night before. But it was fantastic to have all the students together, and we will have a all-school assembly every month. And that's just really an opportunity for us to have a theme and a message, whether that's how to grow our brains and be flexible and persevere, to that we all belong. Safety was our first one, and why it's important to take things, um, seriously when we're running drills. But then we add in games and some community builders as well. And Mr. K came up with a, an original song that was sung that day.
Do you know what the October theme's gonna be at?
Well, it's, uh, Halloween time, and so it's gonna be how to be your authentic self and take your mask off.
I like that. Unless you're Tom Hayward.
What does that mean? I've been nice to you, so I don't even...
Yeah, no, I think that's good.
All right, then we're gonna move on to new business, Dare Curriculum. Chief Young and Sergeant Richard Parrot.
Pearl.
Thank you for the opportunity. What I'm trying to propose tonight, I know Lieutenant Blaze, and actually Sergeant Pearl from the New Hampshire State Police Area, he's the New Hampshire facilitator for Dare. We met with Chris and Suzie a few weeks ago just to go over a couple of things. It's my understanding, I've been here since November 2021. It's my understanding that Dare Curriculum has been in the New Fields Elementary School in the past. With COVID and everything, it's been probably two, two and a half years since it's been in the school. I do have experience teaching Dare. Dare was established approximately back in 1984, and it's been being taught in New Hampshire by New Hampshire State Police since 1990. I became a Dare instructor in 2000, and I taught it in Greenland Central School for 14 years. Currently, myself and Sergeant LaValle are certified in teaching the curriculum. The curriculum has changed over the years. It is a 10-week program. What I'm proposing is to start the program in January. It would be taught by Sergeant LaValle, who's been a police officer in town here for 11 years. He knows a lot of families, children. Dare's being taught in all 50 states, including 50 countries throughout the world. Obviously, uh, in a small town like this, um, I saw the benefits in Greenland, which is about the, twice the size of New Fields, but I saw the pros of having the curriculum in the school, not only teaching, uh, students, um, decisions. And, and this is all backed by, the curriculum is backed by science, um, and stuff like that. But it teaches children safe and healthy, responsible decisions. The curriculum is 10 weeks. A lot of it has to do with, um, decisions, making the right decisions, the consequences that go along with not making the right decisions. A lot of this curriculum is, um, taught in a, in a, an environment in the classroom where, um, it, it's involved in small groups, some of them are larger groups, very little individual work. So it's really, it's a 45-minute lesson per class, and it's 10 weeks. It does require an essay at the end, which is usually created by the classroom teacher, um, and stuff like that. So I brought Sergeant Pearl to round, because I've been out of the Dare Curriculum for seven, eight years. So there's been some changes, and, um, I, I taught it till 2014 until I got promoted in Greenland. So I wanted to bring somebody in that has a little bit more knowledge and, and up to date on some things. And if there's any questions the board has, if I can't answer it, I'm sure Sergeant Pearl can.
Hey, I'm just here for support, but I think I can, Chief did a great job explaining it, but I'm here for any questions you may have, and hopefully I can answer them.
Thanks. What grades would it be for?
Um, I'm proposing the fifth grade.
Fifth grade?
Yep, which I think will be a perfect grade prior to the children in New Fields making that huge transition to the middle school. And currently, Exeter Police Department has a very good program that is teaching it over at the Lincoln Street. So it is being taught in the SAU, and, uh, their officer, Steve Petrowski, who is a veteran, he was one of the Dare Officers, he actually was nominated and the Dare Officer of the Year just a few years ago.
Is Exeter the only SAU doing it current, SAU 16 doing it currently, or are some of the smaller schools as well?
I'd have to know what other schools are in the SAU.
East Kingston, Kensington, Stratum, Brentwood.
From what I'm gathering, um, a lot of communities are not teaching Dare, and I'm not saying it's the towns that are part of SAU because of staffing issues. Dare cutting programs, and Dare is one of them. I can't speak for the other towns other than Exeter that, you know, and obviously, we know Kensington and East Kingston are similar sizes to us. A lot of it comes down to resources. There is a training that is 80 hours plus to get certified, and there's a yearly in-service training that you have to keep your certification. A lot of departments, as you know, in this area are very shorthanded. I'm hearing New Market is going back to it. I'm hearing Newmarket is going back to it. Their SRO is retired from Epping, and they're going to start in the process of teaching Dare back into Newmarket. So that is one school that's looking to add Dare from what I'm being told.
And can you absorb it? Can, do we have the capability to do it through our, through Kevin or you?
Oh, absolutely. You know, and it's either going to be Kevin or myself, there's two of us that are trained in it. Sergeant Lavalley, you know, he's going to a training in a couple of weeks to keep his certification. And what I'm proposing is to start in January. From my experiences in Greenland, that's a good time. We don't want to really teach it early in the year because there's so many things going on at the school with fire drills and students acclimate into the newness. And then we try to start after the holidays because things are so crazy with Thanksgiving, Christmas, and so we like to start it right after the new year.
What costs would be affiliated with it?
For the school, nothing.
Nothing?
For the town, it would be the salary of the officer to come in here and teach, which it's not a big deal. All the education materials that go along with it are provided by the state police. We just have to pick up those workbooks up and conquered. And then any, we do have a Dare account, the town has, and I have plenty of money in that account to pay for any and all materials at any different costs. And usually at the end of the year, there's usually a celebration where the T-shirts are purchased for the students and whatever is decided, you know, between the police department and the school, if there's a pizza party, all those costs are on, you know, that's why we have an account to pay for all that.
Okay, so it is already budgeted through the town?
It's not budgeted. It is a line item that's been there for, I don't know how long, but we have plenty of money in that account to absorb costs for several years. And we get donations throughout the year that supplement, that go into that count, and there's no, there's been nothing being paid out of that count since I've been here.
Okay.
Chief, this seems like a no-brainer in my head, but what, what have you ever heard about someone saying not to do it?
Honestly, I haven't.
Right, okay.
Heard anything.
I couldn't think of anything that'd be like, I mean, maybe a lunatic fringe out there someplace, but I couldn't think of anything that would be like, why would this be a bad idea?
I think what comes down to it is, you know, especially a small town like this, you know, you have seven hours, you know, taking 45 minutes out of a lesson, you know, it is 10 weeks, and we work with the teachers. We'll work with whatever the officer's schedule is, and the teacher's schedule will be flexible. We'll pick the right 45-minute, if it's in the morning, it's in the afternoon, it's midday.
Well, you know, to that point, Suzie, do you have any issue?
It's y'all's decision.
Well, yeah, but you're the principal, and we don't deal with the day-to-day ops, which you do. I'm just asking, would you have any issue with them 45 minutes a week?
No.
All right, there you go.
Bobby? It's still technically public, yes, because I've been close.
Chief, I just had a question. I know I've actually been doing some, I'm taking my addiction medicine certification event this month, so I've been reading a lot about these programs. And I know that Dare has gone through like some iterations over the last 10, 20, 30 years or whatever on the turnaround. Have you seen, it sounds like it's a lot more facilitation to group-based now, which I think has a change from like when we were kids. Could you just comment on?
Yeah, and I'll bring, I haven't taught it in eight years, and they have changed some things with some supplemental type of lessons regarding opiates, the difference between prescription and over-the-counter drugs and stuff like that. So I'll refer to Sergeant Peral regarding any to that question.
So if I'm understanding the question right, more than just getting up and talking with the children and telling them things, are you asking if there's interaction?
Well, Chief's saying that that is the case?
Yes, that is the case.
I'm just trying to learn, understand what's different now in terms of the curriculum. Because it sounds like it's evolved, which is great.
It has evolved. So I've been involved with Dare now since 2009. It took over the New England Training Team in 2018. So I've been teaching essentially, well, I went through a curriculum change about three years after I came on. But essentially, when the chief went through back in the early 2000s, the program was 17 weeks, designed to be instructed to the children, you could not go off script. I mean, it was very, this is what we teach this day. Today, the program is taught, it's a 10-week program, very interactive. The children, you know, they do actually most of the speaking, and the officers are trained to, you know, run with the topic, so to speak. So if they're teaching a particular lesson and there's a great question, we don't want to talk over them and shut that question down. We want to get the children, you know, higher level thinking, asking those questions. If somebody asks, you know, why shouldn't I do this? And, you know, we train the officers to throw it back on the shoulder and say, okay, I understand your question. Why do you think that that you shouldn't do that? And get them to a higher level thinking, and that's the way the program has evolved over the years. It's far more interactive than it's ever been. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah. So I went through Dare 30 years ago. Like, has the tone changed in terms of behaviors and attitudes towards addiction and what that really means? Like, when I, I will speak for myself, but when I went through it, it was very much like, drugs are bad, drugs are bad, and they're like terrible, which I, you know, but it was very much like a, it was in a negative connotation more than like an understanding. Do you know what I'm trying to say? And so I'm just kind of wondering if like, we grew up with this idea that, you know, that it was just a terrible thing to be addicted to drugs, and these people were bad, and this was like, you know, to look kind of.
I know, I think I know what you're trying to say. And I think the overwhelming tone with law enforcement today, even not just in Dare, myself, this is my belief, is that good people make bad decisions. And, you know, we teach this in that, and we, you know, day one, listen, if you, if you have a parent or a grandparent that smokes or comes home in the afternoon and has a drink of alcohol, they're not bad people. And we want to instill that in the kids. It's more about decision, decision-making skills for life than it is to get up there and say, don't do this, don't do that, don't touch drugs. If the kids, if the kids have specific questions about things, we'll do the very best we can do to answer that question. And the way we train the officers in New England, you know, coming through my training is, you know, obviously, don't make stuff up, don't lie to the kids. If you don't know the answer, and you legitimately want to answer that question, and it's a valid question for the kids, you want to, you want to answer all their questions. If you don't know the answer to that today, you can get back to them next week and say, listen, I don't know the answer to that today, but next week we can talk about that and find that for them, find the answer. But we do not get up there and preach that, you know, drugs are bad and stay away from this because if you do, you'll be a monster type thing. That is absolutely not taught anywhere in this lesson. So, does that answer that question?
So one of the.
Well, that's good, and that's what I was wondering, like, you know, we just know much more than we did 30 years ago, and so it's the curriculum change.
Correct me if I want, but Dick, majority of the lessons have nothing to do with drugs.
Correct.
Majority of the drugs, it's more about positive role models, decision-making, you know, being a leader and basically, basically making smart, healthy decisions. A lot of the, when I originally taught the program for the 17 weeks, a lot of it was alcohol, tobacco, marijuana. This is 10 weeks, and one or two lessons has to do with drugs.
It's a lot of refusal skills, you know, confidence, speaking, peer pressure, type how to, you know, instead of being in a situation and trying to get out, how to avoid those situations, how to stay away from, you know, the situations that may put you in those positions. So it really is more of a decision-making, you know, life skill type of class than it is to, nope, we're going to teach you about drugs for 10 weeks, we know.
No, it sounds more like you're teaching about the social situations and the decision-making within those.
Yes, very much so. Yes. We get very positive feedback from the parents, very positive feedback from the kids and the teachers. I mean, I could, I don't want to take the whole meeting, but I could just, you know, through my experiences of teaching hundreds of officers over the last 12 years, I could just tell you a story after story after story of dealing with parents and, you know, what kind of impact it's had on the kids and the family, and I just go on and on, and the officers too. So it's been well-received for me in all the years I've been doing it. You know, we've had officers come in, you know, Steve Petrowski in Exeter is a perfect example, you know, retired after 30 years and came back to do this, and, you know, comes to me the day of graduation, that morning shakes my hands that I should have done this 30 years ago. And, you know, he's so popular with the kids, you love him, he loves doing it, so those are the type of things you want to see in the community. It's more than just, you know, teaching the kids these things. The chiefs of the school, the sergeants of the school, they're going to remember him, and they're going to come to talk to him for years about not just drugs and decision-making, but, you know, everything, you know? I mean, I just go on. You know, I work with a guy in the office who was a Dare Officer and a Dare Mentor, and, you know, he was, he sat down with me and he goes, hey, I was in a doughnut a couple weeks ago, and I'm getting a doughnut, and this girl says to me, hey, you remember me? And he taught Dare from like 92 to like 2005. And he goes, geez, I'm sorry, I know. She goes, you were my Dare Officer. And she said, I want you to know, I've never done drugs. But then she said, I have six kids. Anyway, you know, it's just, it's good all the way around.
Thank you.
When Chief Young and Dr. Andreski and I spoke, we did talk about partnering with the Dare Officer in the classroom with our own school counselor, Tracy Aylward, because inevitably, questions are going to come up throughout the week potentially about what was discussed. And so if Ms. Aylward's able to be there and support that learning and support the same type of decision-making skills that the Dare Officer is teaching, that would be super helpful on our end. The other part is, I made the request for parent letters to go home so that parents know what topics have been covered during that session, so that that kind of conversation can be pursued at home if they choose. And my plan is to actually put out almost the curriculum of what will be talked about so that if any parents do have concerns because of certain family issues, they can be alerted to those and either talk to Chief Young or myself about those prior to the lesson being taught.
Well, I was just going to ask all those things. You got it covered, perfect.
She knew you were coming.
She knew I was coming for you. I love it.
All right, so I guess it's a test if we wanted to implement this. I personally don't see a problem with it.
I don't either. I think it's a no-brainer.
So we need a first second?
We need a motion.
Need a motion at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Yeah, for our policy IGD. You hear the presentation, the next meeting you would act upon it.
Okay.
So we'll put it on the agenda for November for the board to give their approval.
I would like to have some open-endedness about when the program starts. If we look at our calendar, I need some flexibility around it.
Okay.
All right, so moving on to old business, we have to adopt our goals for this year.
They're at the top of the page.
These ones, right?
You discussed them at the last meeting, you just didn't formally adopt them. I did a little edit to the one of them.
I, I thought we were going to be more specific that it was going to be, the data discussion was we were going to be three times a year. Do we have to be that specific?
You don't have to be, no. We said, actually, we have a sheet for you today. So what Suzie and I talked about is to be able to give you data at every meeting in small tidbits, Jenny.
Oh, okay.
So what you see here is just, it's starting November, we'll start with student diagnostics. So that's really, we'll be able to give you our state testing score plus all the diagnostic testing we do here. But we wanted to give you all the information that a board needs to hear regarding data because that is your budgetary responsibility of how we support these programs with the data that you're using. So that's why I opened it as just academic learning throughout the year rather than just three times a year, so we're not getting an hour and a half of just data.
Right.
And really talking about it throughout the year, keeping you informed and really talking about what's happening inside the school.
Okay.
So the sheet that I gave you would be the different themes that we'd have, and I know Ms. Griffith is going to invite different members from the staff to come in and talk about certain things, or we'll bring in, like with special education, we'll bring in Dr. Bennett from the SAU office to talk about any questions you have there. We've done that with a couple other boards, and it's going very well to hear more data about different points.
Is the mid-year student assessment, the student testing diagnostics that the I-ready?
AIMS Web, I-ready. This would be our biggest benchmarks, our FMP.
Sure.
Questions about the goals that we have right in here? Do we need to change anything?
No, I think they're good. I think we just need to have some conversation about creating a system by which board gathers information from all stakeholders and make a plan for what are we going to do to actually do that?
Which can easily be put on the agenda.
Yeah, I would, I would say we should, you know, now that we've gotten surveys, are there any other SAU surveys going out in the next couple of months that we know of?
SAU?
Like SAU-wide, no?
No, not that I'm aware of it this time.
So I would definitely like to talk about the possibility of doing a specific Newfields general survey to stakeholders, just on how we're doing parent input, general kinds of things.
No, I think that's a good point, that we don't actually have a system, so it'd be good to put that on the next agenda and create a system.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool. As far as the goals go, I'm fine with them.
Yeah, me too.
Do we need formally vote on it?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pass the board's goals.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And MOA, the paraprofessionals on substitute stipend.
Oh, is that that sheet?
Basically, from the last time, the, we had talked about, due to the lack of subs, if we need to pull a pair to act as a teacher, that they would not only would get their pair rate for the day, but also get the sub rate that we had budgeted for. So the way that it lays out, it's $115 if they sub for that teacher the whole day, if they sub for teacher half the day, they get 57, 50. And again, that's if they're needing to be pulled for three or more hours throughout the day. It's something that's been happening in all the other schools. And again, to reward the paraprofessionals for stepping up and acting outside the scope of their work for that day. So if you're in agreement with it, we'll make a motion, and I'll send this to Jackie to have her sign, and then I can get it to the union so that they can ratify it as well.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I'll make a motion that we pass the MOA for the paraprofessionals on substitute stipends.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I'll send that to you tonight.
All right, any final public input? All right, then I am closing public input at 6:49. And I will make a motion to enter non-public under 91A32I.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.